After 5:15, so I will go ahead and gavel us in. This is the work session for Hillsborough School District 1J is now in order. Our first agenda item is to sort of welcome leadership from the City of North Plains with us tonight. If you haven't had a chance to dinner, please grab something. As I was just mentioning to the city councilor, I have a kindred spirit with the City of North Plains in that it's part of the Hillsborough School District, yet not part of Hillsborough. And for most of my life in the Hillsborough School District, I did not live in the City of Hillsborough. It always kind of bothered me when people would conflate the two. HSD was Hillsborough and they were one and the same, but they are not. HSD has three municipalities, unincorporated buildings in unincorporated Washington County. So HSD has relationships with lots of different places besides Hillsborough. And one of the goals we set for ourselves this year was to try to do some outreach to the municipalities and make sure that we have an open channel of dialogue and communication. So tonight, we welcome folks from North Plains. I think next meeting or the next work session is the City of Cornelius, where we also have a school. And then we'll do the City of Hillsborough in the fall. So welcome folks from North Plains. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I'm Terri Lederhan. I am the mayor of North Plains. I've been in, I'm in my second term. Yeah, thank you. There are no term limits, so if I want to keep going, I can go and, you know, as long as I keep getting elected. But yeah, right? What's in here? Prior to mayor, I was the council president. So 16 years of public service to my lovely community. And I do hold a day job that actually pays.
So do all of we. People often mistake the school board being paid, but we're also volunteer positions.
I'm Russ Sheldon. I'm council president currently. I've served on the council since 2017. I've been in the community for almost 30 years. I've served in a lot of different capacities and given thousands of hours in terms of anything to youth, youth sports, things like baseball, softball, and lots of other programs. Got more involved with the city when I moved inside the city limits. I was in the clear area. And so I got involved with the budget committee, kind of the first stint on there. And to, I had some urging by a couple of folks because I also serve as president of the Chamber of Commerce. So I had some urging from a couple of business folks who thought, you know, maybe I'd be a good fit on the council. So I ran and survived that and survived the second one. Survived the third one. Who knows? We'll see. But other than that, I'm happy to be here and have some dialogue. Don't communicate enough and certainly probably at this level, not at all. So I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good path to find out more about what we can possibly collaborate on.
I can attest, these both, they both put in a lot of volunteer hours. And I'm Andy Avar, the city manager of North Plains. And attend a few of the long range planning meetings when those happened with Mark. How the city and the district can align on kind of projections, what the student population and demographics are going to look like. Both my kids are in the district. And if I get one takeaway before I leave, I was trying to find this today. I would like to know when middle school starts because I need to prepare my daughter mentally for that now. It's a really hard time getting to sixth grade. So a half an hour later.
They're at Jackson School.
It would be Evergreen though.
Yeah, but that's where you are now. Yeah. And really, Travis, I had an opportunity to meet with Andy and Terri before and try to set this up. And I appreciate you guys actually coming to our meeting meeting. I know you have quorum roles, we have quorum roles, we have our whole board here. And so I would encourage you all to do the same thing that they're doing here and attend their council meeting. It's very enlightening to see their city do the work of their city in person. So I would encourage everyone to, if you have that night open. When I see, are your meetings generally?
The first Monday, the first and third Monday. And then obviously holidays, then it pushes.
Not a morrow there.
Yes.
So the agenda was pretty loose and I think we still have board meetings. Around this table, you have cabinet, superintendent, and our board. So we can open up future lines of communication and you can tell us who to reach out to. Maybe we'll have the board members introduce themselves.
Hey, really glad to be here. Tell us you. My name's Patrick McGuire. I volunteered for the district for two years. And then there's a vacancy two years ago due to someone leaving the board. And I was appointed to fill it. And I ran for six years last year and continuing on now for four years. And it's a really meaningful volunteer role. I often tell people that, you know, some of the other volunteer roles I've had in county tax policy, you know, it's pretty dry. And this, we have, we have dry days where we're reviewing budgets, but then you go out to one of the schools and you're reminded immediately why you.
No offense.
It's very immediate. Well, I love what you're trying to say. But anyway, it's a really wonderful volunteer because you get to go out and immediately the impact of what you're doing. Very rewarding. But we have a really high functioning collaborative board. Last year, we got to, in my first year on the board, last year, we got to participate in hiring and renew superintendents. So happy and proud of the role Travis has done. And so, and we're just really glad to have lines of communication open and ways we can work together. We're happy to do it.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you for joining us this evening. And we look forward to dropping in on one of your meetings as well. I'm Nancy Collins. There were three or four of us that were elected at about the same time, at 2021. My first ever elected official actually serving in the city. But I can't say this is probably the greatest thing that I will probably ever do in my professional career. And I enjoy this. I have a dental giant school. It will be graduating in June, so I'm extremely excited. But I was driving through your neighborhood on Sunday after brunch for Mother's Day, and it reminded me of how proud I am of the truth of our city and our, and our group part of it.
Hi, I'm Yvette. And it's nice meeting you all. And I wanted to say thank you for taking the time out of your evening to be here with us and for all of the volunteer work that you do for the City of North Plains. And I'm the new board member and I've been here for, what, nine months? And it's been a big learning curve for me in a good way. And I come my back from early childhood education. And so now my mind's just been opened to a whole new world.
Mark Watson, I'm the current chair. Eric and I have been on the board for about, for about the same amount of time. I'm in my seventh year. As I mentioned earlier, been in Hillsborough School District for, ever since we moved here in 2000. Just recently, after my house in Alamo was destroyed by a fire, after a couple of years of nomadic behavior, I live in downtown Hillsborough now. So finally in the City of Hillsborough. And again, it sort of illuminates that difference of mentality that people sort of have of HSD being Hillsborough. And it's, it's just not in that, it's very important for me. Let's do Erica and then our students, I think. How about that?
Hi. Sure. As Mark said first, this is my seventh year on the board. And I'm a longtime Hillsboroite, Hillsboroian, I don't know, whatever you want to call it. I am also a product of HSD. So I actually went to school here. And now like, it's really nice that I get to serve on the board. And my kids went to school also in Hillsborough. So really happy to be part of this board. And I'm really happy that you're joining us. We've had, I think, a dinner before COVID when we all got together. So it's one of our goals, trying to reestablish those connections that we.
Yeah, do that first. Let's do the, one of the things we've done pretty well since the pandemic, and kudos to our technology department, that's Jordan, our CTO over there. We've done a pretty good job of hybridizing our meetings. So we often have board meetings, members attend remotely. We have audience input remotely. So we do have two board members who are here remotely today. Sheen Kim and Monique Ward. Sheen, would I go first?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheen Kim. I use she/her pronouns. And this is my fifth year on the board. And just super grateful to, to serve amongst these wonderful colleagues. I generally attend remotely as of about a year ago since I, I had a newborn baby. And so with two, two young ones at home, it generally is easier for me to finish work and, and just attend remotely. So apologies that I can't be there in person with you all, but thank you so much for coming and spending some time with us this evening.
Monique?
Hello. My name is Monique Ward and welcome. I'm sorry that I can't be there in person. I'm on the East Coast currently and hopefully be back soon and hopefully get to meet you in person. Thank you again for coming and joining us this evening and look forward to your presentation.
We, we're also one of the school districts in Oregon. We spelt these numbers like they're common knowledge, but 197 school districts in the state of Oregon. We are the fourth largest school district in the state with about 19,000-ish students or so. And we're one of the boards that for the past six or so years, since Eric and I have been on, we are big advocates for this, we've added student positions to our board. So we have three student board members and two of them are here tonight, I think. And we do everything we can to treat them as full board members. All they can't do is vote because they were selected, not elected. So we have an opportunity for our students. Aliana, would I go first?
I'm Aliana. I'm a senior at campus and I'm also in Early College over there. And I'm really grateful for the year of being part of the, learning so much about HSD and just to weigh everything off braids here. And it makes me really grateful to be a student part of HSD.
I'm like a high school student representative with board. I actually live in North Plains. So I never felt that I'd see the day that I didn't meet. So I'm really grateful, grateful for you guys being here. Love to be here with you guys.
Perj, good singing voice.
Oh, yes.
I didn't know how to get to meet you, so. You should do the National Anthem at a hop skate.
I think we know somebody.
Travis Raymond, superintendent, school district, first year, but I've been in the school district for 20 years. And so it's good to have you at the table. Thank you. Can we look around and show the cabinet members?
Sure, yeah. Assistant superintendent, Rose first, yeah.
Hi, I'm Rose Ramon. I am the executive assistant to the superintendent and I serve the board and the cabinet in my locker.
She's like, who arranged all this, right? She, she's the one who reached out to you. I don't know how it works in your place, but nothing gets done here without Rose making sure it happens. So we are forever grateful for keeping us on track.
I'm Audrey Neville. I'm the assistant superintendent for school performance and I oversee all of our 37 schools in terms of assessment, instruction, and curriculum implementation.
Hi, North Plains team.
This is my 24th year. I didn't know.
Oh, we're doing two years?
I don't know. I don't know if we're. But this is my 24th year in the district. Yeah. Long time.
I'm a real loving fan of what you're doing in North Plains. So expansion of what's happening, go you. So just want to start with that. I'm Brooke Sova. I'm the assistant superintendent for academic services. Why I also say that is if you're interested in connecting students to work-based learning, if you're interested in connecting students to community-based organizations in your community and to learn more about the growth that you are experiencing and what you're doing, please connect with me. This is my 22nd year in Hillsborough. Grew up in Hillsborough almost my entire life.
I'm the equity access and engagement officer for the school district and I focus on students, families, and our staff and how we are making, ensuring that our students are known, valued, and empowered as well as our families and our staff. This is my 11th year in Hillsborough. I did work to the city that way when I first moved from Oregon, but I originally started in education in Los Angeles, California. I'm 32nd year in education. Started at two.
I'm Beth Grazer. I'm the communications officer for the Hillsborough School District. And I grew up in Hillsborough, went to Hillsborough schools. All four of my boys went to Glencoe. I think my son Keaton played football with your son. Yeah. Okay. And Andy, I've been in the long range planning for a long time. You're the only one I don't know. So nice to meet you. I was a school board member for two years before I joined staff 15 years ago. So I'll be starting on my 16th year in July.
Michelle Morrison. I'm the district financial officer. I too, I was hired here in 2011 and succeeded Adam Stewart as financial officer in 2018 when we passed our bond and he took on the new role. So super excited, very proud to be HSD and just always the community that we serve. And very, very happy that you guys are here tonight.
My name is Saideh Haay Koshkut. I'm the operations officer. This is my role, but I've been in the district for 20, 40 years also. I support facilities maintenance, transportation, nutrition services, safety, and athletics and activities. And fun fact, I bought my first home in North Plains.
Oh, that's a great name. Years ago.
I'm Jordan Beveridge. I'm the district information and technology officer. Take care of all the systems and flinky lights and all of those. We, I've been in education 30 years and just over five years here.
So we have two schools in your municipality, in your, in your city. One of our newest elementary schools, Atollity Ridge. Have we seen, you're all of the dedication, I think, right? Yeah. Can anybody help Andy with what time middle school starts?
Eight forty-five. Eight forty-five. Eight forty-five to three fifteen. Yeah. For Wednesdays, for Wednesdays, nine fifteen. I know. It's gonna be so exciting.
Tell her that. I'm gonna.
If you want to tell her eight fifteen, we won't say a word.
Okay. Good. I'll stick around though. For those of you who don't know, Andy is also a short timer, so I'm glad he's joining us. Andy has accepted a position in the City of Beaverton.
Oh. What are you gonna do in Beaverton?
Community development. Yeah. But anyway. I've been very grateful to work with Andy or pre-COVID, through COVID, on the long range planning committee. It's been great.
Yeah, we're, it's tough to last. There's no uncertain terms about who'll move forward, right? So he's setting us up with recruitment and we have an interim coming onboard. So I think, you know, we're gonna certainly miss him. We're gonna hope for the best in terms of finding a good candidate. It's gonna be tough shoes to fill because he, he really did dig his heels in for us and accomplish some things that really needed it at the time. And the timing is, is pretty critical. So we're at, you know, we're at, or we are where we're at today because of what he's done. Yeah. It's, it's, it's tough to lose somebody like that. We'll let him go. He's gotta grow too. So it's, you know, he, he came in, he's pretty young and that's a great thing, but there's a lot of aspirations. And it's tough because we're a small city near all the big ones. And all the big ones are looking for talent too. Everybody's shopping for talent and that's harder and harder to find today.
And I know you're in the office of managing some growth, so I wanted to, if you, would you like to talk about that at all? Would you like to let everybody know how?
Yeah. Yeah, that's top of mind for so many of us. And I know that when Andy did come onboard, especially during the interview process, we were talking about urban growth boundary expansion. And at that time, I think, you know, he has even stated that it was a new term for him. So for him to come into the state of Oregon from Alaska and to learn about the land use laws in Oregon, I'll let him speak of that, but I'm sure that he could tell you that he's learned quite a bit over his tenure in North Plains. And extremely grateful to, you know, for him and his leadership to be able to help us navigate this. It's, it's not been an easy process, but it has been lengthy. The urban growth boundary expansion work that we've been doing has been a process that we've been working through for the last several years. We've had, you know, multiple opportunities to speak with our community, open meetings, open dialogue. We've had partners at the table from, you know, the elected officials, the volunteers, staff, regional partners, you know, ODOT, PGE. So we've had a lot of folks at the table during the urban growth boundary expansion conversation and the, and the process. And so, you know, looking back, looking back 25 years ago, when they, when we went through the first UGB expansion, there wasn't a whole lot of, there was no dialogue about economic opportunity, you know? It was all about housing. And this urban growth boundary expansion is about housing and economic development because a lot of what we're seeing, obviously not just in our region, but in our state, is that we have to plan for housing and economic opportunities. And so, you know, being in a position where we are, as far as our location, right off of 26, north of the highway, we don't have a major road through the community, we're close to the beach, we're close to the airport, we're close to, you know, campuses like Intel and Nike and things like that. It's just a wonderful opportunity. And so going through this whole process has been very, very extensive. And I mean, I've learned quite a bit through this whole process as well. Still learning every day about something, a nuance or an ORS or something like that. But there is, and I, and I think even HSD was at the table years ago when we were looking at future expansion in North Plains. The Atollity site, you know, that was on the table and that was built in anticipation of future growth for our community. So, and we thank you for that partnership. We also thank you for helping us when Atollity is on the east side of town and we needed to connect the east to the, the main city and to create this walking path with the pedestrian path. And so HSD was gracious and provided funding to help us get that connection so that our families had a safe route from Sunset Ridge on the east side over to the library and the core. So we value the partnership greatly. And, you know, one thing that when I talk to families and they, they talk about Atollity and how much they love Atollity, they also want to make sure that North Plains Elementary School is not forgotten, right? It's a smaller, it's an older school. It's our, you know, one of our, it's our original school. And so there are families that go, okay, well, you know, Atollity is really nice and everybody wants to go there, but we really want to make sure that North Plains Elementary School is also lifted up and elevated and, and shown as a beautiful, wonderful school to attend as well. My son Luke went there, you know, and loved it. The teachers were always great. The staff was wonderful. And, you know, just the addition of the, the new addition of the gym and the parking lot has been amazing, right? And has helped a lot. But moving forward with this urban growth boundary expansion, as many of you know, you've probably seen in the news, we have a referendum, you know, we have a ballot measure in May. And folks, there are folks in the community that don't want it and there are folks in the community that do want it. And so next week, we'll probably get to figure out where we stand with us. And one question I get a lot is if, if it, if it fails, what are you gonna do, right? Because we have to plan for growth. According to state law, we have to plan for growth. Our city will move forward with a, with a, with a, with a plan regardless. We see it as such a pivotal time for North Plains. We have, it, it's our time. It's our time to be able to look to the future for our community for the next 20, 25 years and say, hey, we want to become a full-service community, a full-service place. People are moving to our town and they love it. They like the garlic festival and the chili cook-offs and the, these wonderful small little events that we have, but it brings the people together and it brings people out and it helps build community. And that's what we want to continue to do. So the, so the, I'm, I, you know, Councilor Sheldon and I, we're, we're like driving this train hard and we're gonna stick to it and say, we are going to find a plan that will actually get us moving forward in our path regardless of how this turns out because this is our time. And we really believe wholeheartedly, this is our time to be able to grow and plan for our community. So I'm really excited, pumped. I, I do sleep a little bit at night because of just, you know, just the stress of, of a campaign. But other than that, I really, I feel very strongly that we've, you know, followed a process, stayed process, and we're, we're moving forward with it. So I'm sure these two gentlemen have a lot more to say about that.
Well, all I can say is the whole council's resolute in our, basically our methodology. We followed all of the, basically all the premises and principles of our land use rules in this state. And we've, we've, we've basically submitted our documentation, which has been accepted. So it's, it's a lot of noise that in some cases doesn't reside inside our community. They reside outside of our community. So it's, it's been a tough battle and she's kind of humble because she's had to wear a flak jacket and it's been pretty vicious and nasty at times, frankly. It's, it's interesting where people can go when they have near anonymity and that's on Facebook. You know, maybe their name's on there, but they'll say things on there that you would never hear them say, or at least you wouldn't expect them to say in the supermarket line or seeing them in public or face to face. And so it's, you know, it's, it's tarnished things a little bit along that perspective. But I think as far as the council's concerned, we're, we're confident we're gonna win this. If we don't, we do have a plan. So we have a contingency. It may not look like the original contingent, the original plan, but we're not letting go. This is the most consequential decision that's ever been made in this city without question. So we are resolute.
It's super exciting to hear you guys talk about this with the passion that you are. Some of it is your experience and some of it is just the understanding that the one thing that no one can change is to pass it with time and change itself. So I really truly urge you all, won't stop. They will come along. Win or lose, the changes that you all are going through, they will come. They really will. And ask for people in their opinion, God bless them, right? Do you remember that? What is your heart? No, I'm not. I am not from the South. I'm all the way to the West.
I hear you.
Right there, and it saved my life many times on my day job. And I can tell people, just bless your heart. But I really do them for you and I'm encouraging you, if I have to stand on, if I have to stand on the corner, you can tell the corner, be like, what is that? And people are gonna ask you, who is that person? They say, she's on the pool board and we'll stand on the corner and we'll tell them whether you want it or not, for a couple.
Thank you, Nancy. I love that.
I think, I think you guys are doing such a great job at forward thinking. And I know that this is probably feels really difficult because it's, it's a sense of identity that has attached, you know, to North Plains and how it used to be. And I think Hillsborough struggled with that as well. And Cornelius is in the same place as well. But we have an opportunity to have a really great place for families to live and to actually have the jobs that come here be for the kids that are graduating from our district, for our community. And I, and North Plains has just a unique character that I think attracts people to want to live in that community and be close enough to all the other amenities. But there's, like Nancy said. But there's, like Nancy said, there's only this path forward. The other path is when you don't change, you get left behind. And that's not what we would want for any of the cities in Hillsborough. I'm really excited also because we, our enrollment has been declining. We want more families in our district. We want places that families can live, that can bring their kids. So I'm really excited to hear.
There's been a lot of growth. At least the time I've been there, when I, when I first came and my kids went into kindergarten, my oldest boy, Steve Callaway was the, he was the principal. And they, they all went through North Plains Elementary into Evergreen to Peter. So, you know, it's, it was, it was a good, it was a good experience for them. Our city grew at the time. I think it's probably doubled in size two and a half times since I came in 96. And while I didn't live in the city limits, I was pretty connected to the school. The school was a central point and that is the connection that a lot of people have through their families, through their children, to the youth of the community. And sometimes I think, well, you know, I'm older now, my kids are out of the system, right? But I'm not really connected to the school and I'm not sure why I'm not connected. Maybe that's my fault, right? Well, I don't have kids in school, so I'm certainly not there every day roaming the halls or going to visit with somebody. But part of what I think, you know, we can do as a collaborative effort is how do we keep, you know, how do we keep the messaging up and the communication up? So, you know, even the residents who have their kids pass through the school still understand what's going on. And I know less people read these days, but.
Statewide gatherings all the time, we hear often how the school is the hub of a rural community in many cases. And I think being the fourth largest district in Oregon, we're often classified as an urban district and people may not realize just how rural so many of our schools are. And that, you talk, it feels like, and it is the hub of that community in a lot of ways. So I'm glad.
Witch hazel, Groner, North Plains and West Union.
At West Union, yeah, all of them.
Yeah, kind of.
Rebuild.
The more urban area.
Yeah. All the ones I could walk to from my own house. Um, Carrie, I think if you have a list, is there anything else you want to make sure to cover otherwise?
There was one thing I do want to say thank you. When we met Travis and Mark, when we met, we talked about collaborating with the schools to have open gym night, right? And so that was, that was well received at Atoladee. And, but at North Plains Elementary, it wasn't as, as attended, well-attended. Don't know why that is. I don't know if, you know, just at, at Atoladee's location with the houses being right there, whatnot, but it's not something, we still want to continue that collaborative effort. I think it was a great, good faith for the community to be able to come and use those gyms and have that gym time with people around and families around. And so it's something I definitely still want to continue doing because it was, it was a positive experience for those families who participated in it. So I'm, I'm glad that we moved forward after that conversation that we had and we're able to make that happen.
Appreciate it. One of the first things board members here learn is when you're new, you want to get in there and start fixing things and get, if someone's hired to do that job, it's not your job. We're volunteer school board members. So one of the reasons I want to make sure you got a chance to meet all the cabinet is so when you have those direct engagements, it's, you have the support of the board, all of you, to work with North Plains to help build a more collaborative community. The board is all for this. We're probably not the ones who would actually implement back to, uh, open gym. It's going to be Prime Saida and Brooke and, so, but yes, you have the support of the board and now hopefully you know the right people to reach out to to make some things happen.
We love that our facilities are used to build community. Like that's the whole point of all the money we spend. It was like to have buildings that could be used by families and by communities, not just to sit there.
That's part of what we want to do with growing some of our recreation. We don't have those facilities, so if we can, can utilize facilities like that and tell facilities, at least collaborate on that basis. It makes sense to me. It's utilization, it's efficient, it's a public resource. How do we make that work and how do we continue to make that work? I think that's an important discussion to continue to have.
Is there something special? Maybe if the idea of an open night and Atoladee came out, and it was in that school, why couldn't we do something special for North Plains Elementary? To, there's got to be something, we need something special about that to bring up that community. Because you're right, everybody will be thinking towards the new school and thinking that we're abandoning the old school, which is happening, which is not the case. We didn't abandon the other 20 some elementary schools that were built, nevermind. That didn't happen. But when you're in a smaller community, it, it might feel that way. So I guess maybe is there something we can do to help support North Plains Elementary that is, I don't know, it should be unique or something special about it? I'm only eight years here in the Pacific Northwest, so I'm not, I don't know the 20, 30, 40 year history yet. I don't have that type of background, but it doesn't take, you be here for four years to experience it or just, I can figure that out in a very short period.
Well, I think that, I think that's a great question and I think that going back, for me, going back and talking to the organizers of the gym night, right? To kind of break that apart, to see what, what worked, what didn't, and how we can make it better. And just knowing that, having that collaborative effort to be able to use that space was a win for our community and it was a first for us. So if we, I think if we just keep trying, right? Until we find the right formula, right? The right, the right way to do it or whatever. So I think it's just, it's going to be some trial and error and we'll just have to continue to move forward, figure, figure it, figure it out, basically.
This one's before the pandemic. I hope to make this a regular occurrence. And I hope to see what one of your board meetings seems. Is there anybody, anybody online of anything you need to add?
We do have an, we do have a great community event coming up on June 6th from 6 to 8. It's the Ice Cream Social and it's, it's always the first Thursday in June. The North Plains Events Association and the city, we put it on. We're going to have, we closed off the street in downtown. We have music, we have a band and free ice cream and chalk art and just a really great community event. So if you want to come and really kind of get a flavor and taste the flavors, then I would, I would, I, you have my personal invitation. Thursday, June 6th.
Starts at 6:00.
6 o'clock.
June 6th at 6:00.
Thanks.
You can also have Hillsborough High School graduation that night.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah. Split our time, right? Yeah, graduation ice cream. So yeah, thank you guys for coming, making a little bit of time for us and make this a regular occurrence if we can, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. All right.
You guys can stay if you want, you don't have to.
Enjoy your dinner.
Thank you guys for stepping up to the table. Our next agenda is a partnership update reassessed. We've had a couple of discussions as a board recently about being more curious about how our relationship with our substitute provider works and that kind of information. So we invited them to a work session to give us an overview. Do you have something to help kick us off?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, it was the 12th that we brought forward our contract recommendation for the next three years, our six-year extension. Some, a lot of questions have come up. Are they supported? Have, and other questions you might have. So I invited Amy and Jamie and they are here. Please introduce yourselves and take a look.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Amy Bruski. I'm the VP of Operations at the Hillsborough office.
And I'm Jamie Burning. I'm a Senior Regional Manager out of our Hillsborough office.
We appreciate you guys taking the time to invite us and we're excited. Hopefully we can also start attending more regularly. So we wanted to kind of introduce who we are, our team, and then tell you a little bit about our partnership and then kind of dive in a little bit deeper into instances of substitutes. So our office is located just down the street and we have about a team of 20 that, that support just Oregon. We are a national company, but we have local support. So underneath us, we have a team dedicated just to the Hillsborough office though, out of that 20.
Oh, matter? Oh, sorry. I feel like I'm yelling already.
Oh, no.
Okay. You can't read my lips.
So we have about a team of six dedicated just to Hillsborough in addition to extra support. And so we support the substitutes. We support your building, admins, your principals, HR consistently. So those are just a couple of the names, but again, we have a much broader team. A little bit about our partnership with Hillsborough. We've been partnered with HSD since 2016. So we have a great partner, oops, was that me? Okay, sorry. Great partnership. We provide substitutes for all classifications except for strippers. We're not allowed to do that due to liability. But we do your paras, your sped, your licensed, as well as the facilities as well. So we meet with the HR team bi-weekly with Michelle and her team and we enjoy those calls. We also probably talk to Brian, probably daily. So in addition to just the, the building administrative level as well, and then substitutes obviously daily as well. And it does say that we meet annually for a service review. We actually do that twice a year. We do a mid-year review just to kind of check in, see, get a pulse of how the year is going and then again, at the end of the year, just to kind of close that year and then prep for the next. So we're meeting consistently with the district to make sure and ensure that we're meeting your needs as expected. So we partner with the communications team for recruitment with Beth. In fact, our team loves Beth all the time. Like, oh, you're going to go see Beth? We love Beth. And so we're constantly in communication with her as well as on the schools in addition to that. We'd like to attend any event that we can within the community, within your schools. We're constantly recruiting, not just grassroots, but also digitally. That shifted, you know, just with COVID. It went from so much grassroots to now everyone wants digital. So we've had to pivot. We call ourselves professional pivoters, working with substitution and industry education. You know that. We're consistent with our regulations and policy. We ensure that, as Michelle mentioned, that we're reviewing the contracts. We just entered into the third contract, as Michelle mentioned, for next year. So we're excited to continue that partnership. One of the, a couple of the things that we provide for the district is our electronic leave tracking system. So we have Jesse, who was, I did not go by name, but he works with your team probably on a multiple daily basis to go over our leave, your leave absences, payments, payroll, things of that sort. And then one of the benefits that we provide is we're able, excuse me, able to provide stability and incentives that the district can't provide. So in a, a little bit on the next slide about the benefits to the substitutes with a little bit of client support as well. So one of those benefits is HSD is that you guys have hired 51 of our substitutes just this year. So not only do we recruit for your substitutes, we're recruiting for the districts and the vacancies that you guys have. Benefits for the substitutes is we offer weekly pay and every Friday. So that's definitely a benefit that most districts aren't able to provide. The monthly pay can be very difficult, especially in the para position. And so we offer that weekly pay and substitutes love it. Every Friday they are like, oh, getting paid today. We also offer benefits. So we have medical, vision, life insurance, again, that most districts aren't able to provide to substitutes. So it's a huge benefit and draw, it's affordable healthcare. And we have quite a few of our substitutes who actually take advantage of that and they are eligible day one, so they don't have that waiting period. In addition to that, we have a 401K with a discretionary match, the same 401K that our corporate employees have access to. And last year we matched it at 3%. So we're excited to be able to offer that. This year we offered, we've always had ongoing training, but this year we've actually increased our training. And so now we provide live interactive training, both to our directed at special education, para, and then we break it into the licensed. Those are actually hosted by retired teachers. One of them is a HSD retired teacher and we offer those, this month is nine trainings in addition to their regular compliance training. So ensuring that we're putting quality substitutes in the classroom. They can attend those trainings as many times as they want because they are interactive and so the, the audience is always different, so there's always going to be different questions. So that has been the biggest benefit and we've received such great feedback from our substitutes thinking, I was going, hey, I didn't feel, I didn't feel trained enough to go into like, for instance, a fed education classroom. So that's been really beneficial. We continue to work on the same platform that you've been on with absence management frontline. So our team, in addition to the 24 access online, we do callouts, manual callouts. Our substitutes, our, our team know your substitutes. In addition to knowing your secretaries and your office administrators, we know your substitutes. We have our favorites, the ones who will answer our calls, answer a text, answer an email. So in addition just to the online digital, which some want, some, how many of us don't answer our phone or we don't know the phone number? They know our phone number, they know who's calling because we're constantly engaging with them. So we offer monthly raffles, substitute of the month. For instance, we're doing this five Fridays. We're going to offer a raffle for $500 if you pick up the next five Fridays. It's nice out, we, we know the ebbs and flows of substitutes and our educators, they're all like going to be out and so we're able to offer that and that really incentivizes those subs to pick up that up. Also, we're constantly monitoring your fill rates and so if there's a challenge at a specific school, we're already on top of that. We add gift cards to that to again incentivize anything that we can do to incentivize the subs to go to work on days that we just know and see that it's going to be a little bit heavier. So we know springtime is just a little bit crazy right now. We anticipate it, it's a little bit heavier than it's been, but we're doing well. So another thing that we do offer is our referral program. So our best referrals come from the district and from the community. And so we offer $100 to every successful referral we have and you don't have to be an ESS employee. So we've paid out about $30,000 in referrals and those are the best substitutes that we have, honestly, because you want to work with your friends, you want to work with your family, you know if they're going to be a good fit. And so we really encourage that and constantly market that with our substitutes. We also have a marketplace for employee discounts. They get discounts on flights and hotels and anything. So they love all of those little benefits that actually add up to a lot. And as you mentioned, we are here to kind of review our incidents and working with our substitutes and how we walk them through that process. We laughed when it was stated, bless your heart. Sometimes the incidents that come across our screen, we're like, oh, bless your heart. So that's why we laugh, we're like, oh yeah, everybody says that. And you just smile. So we actually have, in addition to our team, we have a team of incident managers through our HR. They're dedicated solely to coaching, retraining our substitutes and that is our goal, is to retain and retrain. So a little bit about how that works, we'll kind of go through that flow. So we always want to improve our, the substitutes' experience and then coach them back into the classroom as long as the incident's not egregious. A little bit about how that works is initially when a substitute lands on it, an incident report is what we call it. The building administrator, the principals are going to submit that incident in full detail. The reason that we want that to go directly from that team member or the district to our HR team is so we have all of the details that we need in order to make the determination of how to move forward. Oftentimes the district will call us and say, hey, this happened and we're still going to push back, can you, can you submit that? So then we have all the information to again, make sure that we handle this appropriately. Most of our warnings are Most of our warnings are, we would call them like a level one, and we'll go into that a little bit. And they just, warning. It's like, hey, don't be on your cell phone. Show up on time. Dress appropriately, things like that that can just be coached or simple reminders. That's the majority of them. Oftentimes, that will be handled with an email. If it's like, hey, we noticed that you were late, things of that sort. But we also offer phone coaching. So our incident managers, we have one dedicated just to Oregon, will actually pick up the phone, call the substitute, tell you what happened, this is what happened. Let's coach you back in, and then put you back into the classroom. It is always offered for additional training. We have thousands of trainings that are online through our partner, TCN, which is Global Compliance. They have access to those modules at any point in time. They also have access to our local training that we discussed with the sped and the para and the licensed. But we also have onboarding training. So if they need to go through our training again, we call it engaged learning. It's a little bit more in-depth on classroom management, typically is the high, high level of retraining. And they can go through that again as well. So a lot of different opportunities to put them back into the classroom, if available. And then that's our engaged learning. So again, our engaged learning goes into the classroom management, attendance, student safety, professionalism. That's really showed up quite a bit this spring, is a lack of professionalism. And that can range from conversations, communication, again, showing up on time. We like to joke that sometimes common sense isn't so common. And so we coach on those things. And that engaged learning is actually put on by our HR team, specifics with a retired teacher. So a variety of coaching and retraining, again, to retain our substitutes, which really, they're asking for that training so they feel better prepared. What to expect, when the employee, once an incident is reported, we are reaching out to them within 24 to 48 hours. Again, via email and phone. We like to have a paper trail to ensure that we have that record if needed. If the district requests a block, so in the incident report, whoever submits that can actually request whatever disciplinary action they would like. So it could be a block. It could be a warning. It could be a block from the classroom, from a school, all the way up to a district level. If it is a block, we make sure that we remove them from any upcoming jobs until the investigation has been completed. Depending on the action and the incident, that could be just immediately as soon as, you know, we provide them coaching and we talk to the substitute and really talk into the classroom. And if that investigation needs to be a little bit more in-depth and we have to go through TSTC, obviously, that can be a lot longer. So they'll be notified. Our incident manager that is a client will reach out to the district or the building office administrator if there's more information that needs to be provided. Myself and Jamie and our team are all on those incident reports. So we receive them ding 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 with our email and review every single one. And so there's always eyes on that. So we constantly know what's happening. If there's a substitute who lands on an incident multiple times, we get to know those names as well, and then we review those. And if we have to move towards a termination, we can do so. So this kind of reviews our level one, level two, level three concerns. So if the concern is a level one, again, attendance, conflict of interest, stress, because cell phones, they're typically addressed by email to say, hey, this is your reminder. You did have an incident report. Typically, those will generate a call to our local office, and our local office is able to answer those questions, or they also can reach out to their incident manager. If it's a level two concern, sometimes it's a failure to follow lesson plans, classroom management, again, inappropriate comments. We do train on communication and what's appropriate and what's not. Some of the things that come across an incident, you're like, what are you thinking? We coach on that. So those are gonna be a phone call because we really want to ensure that we have that conversation with those substitutes before they go back into the classroom. Level three concerns, usually student safety, leaving a classroom unattended, physical contact, sleeping has been one that's been coming across recently. I'm not sure what's happening there, but the substitutes are a little tired. So we advise them to get more rest. But we're gonna absolutely have our incident managers. And then again, phone, email, documented, obviously talking to the building administrators before they put them back into the classroom. And if they're suspended pending the outcome, they'll walk you through that. The HR team does receive all updates once the incident has been closed. So the district is aware of how we're moving forward as well.
I'm just glad you do have to do, like, for example, how many substitutes you provide and there's within those that might get to that level of discipline? In your race, I find the lack of common sense quite... As far as I've arrived in the situation, what makes you feel better? I figured out that when doctors in the house and people are like, what, Wes said they didn't want any? Are you sure?
We have plenty. That's okay. We do track that. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't know those numbers offhand, but we do track that. And we actually get a report every week to see where we're at with the incidents across the state. And then we actually break those down to, are they classified? Are they licensed? Are they on a restricted license? Because we want to ensure that we're, again, putting quality substitutes into your classroom. And then we can pivot and improve our trainees as well. So we're constantly analyzing that. And this kind of just goes over the flow, which we kind of went over. So again, the incident report is submitted. Our team receives it, and then we reach out within 24, 48 hours. If it's something that's very serious, we reach out right away. Somebody on our team is gonna receive it and go, hey, we need to block them. We need to remove them, whatever we need to do. We go through that process via email, via phone. And then our incident manager will work the incident overall and then return to the classroom, hopefully retaining them and putting the substitute in a better place. Some terminology that you might hear is terminated refers to an employee whose employment with ESS has been terminated. We are partnered with over 23 other districts in the state of Oregon as well as another 24 charter schools. And so terminated means they're not eligible to work for ESS any longer. If they're blocked from your district, that does not mean that they're termed from ESS. They still are eligible to work in other districts unless there's, again, multiple incidents where it's just like, hey, you're just not deemed a good fit. Consent to retrain. They do have to consent to attend the retrainings. Legislation and things of that go into effect for paid training. So we are sensitive to that. If they decline, then we remove them from being eligible for employment with us. So they can be blocked from the school, as I mentioned, or a classroom, or the district as a whole. And these are just kind of examples of the different types of incidents that we receive. Again, classroom management, did not follow schedule, did not follow lesson plans. I will say, we do get a lot of feedback from our substitutes that lesson plans aren't provided. And that makes it really challenging going into a classroom and not knowing how to be prepared and what to do. So we're constantly talking to our partners to be like, hey, this is something that we're hearing. Even on the building level, we'll share that information as we receive it. Professionalism-related concerns will include late reporting to assignments, no call, no show. We track all of those things. The schools will actually input an incident if they don't show up or if they come in late. That way, we can track it, coach them back up. But if it's consistent and we see that pattern, we are gonna go ahead and remove them. Late assignment cancellations, left assignment early, inappropriate comments, behavior, inappropriate appearance, cell phone use, poor attitude. So kind of those things are the general for professionalism. And then misconduct, inappropriate physical contact, violation of law, violation of district property. So we do work with TSTC, as I mentioned. So we have a great partnership with them. So if there's something that needs to be reported on that level, we do handle that as well. And then lastly, just wanted to kind of show a little bit of our partnership at a higher level. We do year-round recruiting. We're actually in the, the biggest uptake of recruiting is over the summer. Just to attend the markets and the job fairs and any events that we can be a part of in the community, we're definitely attending and signing up for. Last year, we awarded four graduates a scholarship of $1,000 each. And this year, we've increased that to seven. So we haven't identified our seven yet, but it's gone out. So we are reviewing that. We offer it, and then somehow they don't want the $1,000. A good thing to note, though, is year over year, we're always analyzing your data. And we've actually filled over 10,000 more absences from last year. You guys have had a significant increase in requests. And we've, we've met the, we've met the request. And so we've been able to fill in the 90s and then the 80s. 90s for our licenses, which is huge. So our goal is to have every absence filled every single day. Classified struggles, just as it does across the board. But we've done really well. I'm proud of the team for keeping up with your requests and your demand. 10,000, and we're still not done yet. So we still have a couple more weeks left. District partners? In this area, well, we have over 20, we're at 24 now in the state. And so here in the area, we have Reynolds, and we have David Douglas, and North Clackamas. We have Medford. We have Sherwood. We have Banks and Gaston. We have the Coast. We're constantly growing. We have some partners that are coming onboard next year. So we are the largest substitute provider in the nation. We have, we're partnered with over 1,000 districts, and we serve over 5 million students a day.
And thank you for the redirection.
Oh, no, you're okay. This year, we've hired 311 new substitutes to your already large substitute pool. Again, you have, you have still on 51 of them so far, which is great. It supports the district. But that also speaks to our year-round recruiting and just the vetting process and onboarding process that we really take serious as we're bringing on new substitutes. So you do have an active subpool of over 1,300 substitutes. We do have a metric that we work off of. Prior to some of the legislation that took effect with the paid leave, we were a one-to-three ratio. We wanted to have three substitutes for every one absence that you had. We now, our goal is to have one to five. So again, constantly recruiting because we do lose them, whether it's to districts or other education, whatever it might be. That's our goal, is to always have that one to five. We kind of discussed the training already. We do have safety care training, and Jamie Lee's got with her team. And so far, they've trained 96.
Which, like, these numbers are through the end of April. So we've actually, we've had another safety care training. And next year, for safety care, it is gonna be a requirement for every building-based substitute to be safety care-trained. Because a lot of times, those that are a building-based of, they end up in a sped classroom. And so we want to make sure that they are equipped to be able to handle. And the substitutes are ecstatic about that. I can say Hillsborough district is the only district that's reached out to us to figure out a way to make this training happen. And they have been a great partner. So we're very appreciative of that for the subs because it's just another tool, and they're a tool that helps to make them more successful in the classroom.
Are there substantial terms to do when we quote unquote feel their staff's hiring?
There are, and they're really loose. Of other contracts where you have to wait six months, a year, or you have to buy that person out. And that's not the case. Early on in our partnership, both of our unions have very specific assignments. And when they're in assignment for a certain amount of time, then they're automatically temped higher. So they, they've just been really great partner. I, we have yet to, and like, put into place a fee for anybody that's been hired by the district.
For so years of possible...
Yes.
I see you're near the end. I guess I have similar questions. So when, when someone transitions from the ESS team to the HSD team, doesn't create a sore spot between us? It's maybe not encouraged, but, or encouraged? Or is it perfectly fine? Or you guys are also like, hey?
We come from ESS to HSD. We are all for it. It's a great move and a great move for the district. And makes us proud of our team for vetting and onboarding and our substitute, you know, being capable. We're constantly in our vetting process, what are your goals? Some of our substitutes, they just simply want to substitute others. This is a step in the right direction. And they're foot in the door to get into education. And we speak on that during their orientation. And we get to know our substitutes. As soon as they apply, they, we reach out within 24 hours with a phone call. We introduce ourselves. We're finding out what their goals are and what they're, what they want to do. So we're really identifying at that point anybody who's interested in full-time work. But no, we don't implement the fee.
Yeah.
HSD has been a great partner.
Yeah. And it's a great opportunity for the district to actually get a feel for that employee before actually giving them, you know, so, I mean, it's just...
It's a working interview.
Yeah. They get to see if it's a good fit.
Any other questions from my colleagues?
And so I appreciate all the information about resolving incidents. So it's good to know. I'm curious a little bit about onboarding as far as our licensed staff. I know that in some cases, in Oregon, it's questionable for someone who doesn't have a full teacher preparation to buy a district or a substitute license. So I'm curious of our pool, how, what percentage has a full substitute license and which has a restricted?
Don't know that information offhand. I can say that we've had an increase of requests for sponsorship just over the last two years. We're sponsoring over 1,000 substitutes. Not just for Hillsborough, but for the entire state and Oregon. Yeah.
But we do have some percentage that's sponsored. And a sponsorship that's done by the district, not by ESS? Is that correct? Or is that done by ESS?
For our substitutes, they're done by ESS. Yeah. It's not... They're sponsored by a school district, but we're the ones that are getting everything vetted and doing all the paperwork of it. And it's not, they're not, the ones that are employed by ESS aren't sponsored by Hillsborough.
We don't employ any directly as a district, any substitutes, all of them are by ESS.
You don't, like, restricted sub-licenses, they cannot be employed by a district under that license. They can, there's other licenses that the district can sponsor to get them employed for that position. Otherwise, they have to have a preliminary, yeah, those type.
Okay, okay. We'll go along with that.
Yeah.
You mentioned community events. Thank you, we all, for being at Tamarack for every event. It's nice to see you there. Do you think that if subs have benefits available day one, is it sort of proportional based on how much they work? Or do they have to meet a threshold before they qualify for benefits?
I know that they're eligible day one. I think they have to work 10, I should know this offhand. I think they have to work 10 vacancies. Like, so that could be a half-day, full-day, anything like that. It is 100% paid by the employee. So they, they can meet with a benefit specialist to set that up and figure out what works for them. I'm always like, I worked in healthcare before I worked in education. So I'm like, it is a great, if you don't have vision, it is a great opportunity for vision or dental or different things that you might need to add to your already, what you already have. or dental, or different things that you might need to add to your already, what you already have. Um, but it's definitely something that, it's one, we have benefit specialists that can talk to them at length of, like, what are the best options for you, um, that type of...
It, it is a great path to be able to get some health insurance coverage while you're...
Right.
Okay. Um, uh, don't need answers today, but weird, so your employees are your employees that work in our buildings, and, um, it's a complicated dynamic, say that, right? So, um, especially when it comes to discipline and things like that, it, it, and, uh, but so the weird... What happened, that's a few things that I didn't, I don't know what we're talking about. We'll have to figure out today, but a board member cannot be an employee of the district. Could a board member work for ESS and be deployed to one of our classrooms? I think so. That's a little, okay.
You want a new career, Mark?
We have to ask you.
Actually, I have one of your retired teachers as, um, besides our, um, teacher, our professional learning specialist, one of your retired teachers is an account manager.
Just be an interesting dynamic, don't you think?
I think you, I think you, as a board member, would likely have to disclose that to the board.
That's what?
Disclose it to the board.
Sure. Can I get the 100 bucks for referring Mark?
Remember, wife is a friend. If you never work for the district, because the district has to do it.
But if your wife is not a part of the district, yes, she can.
If you have an eight-year-old...
If you have an 18-year-old child who's not a part of the district, they can refer a friend.
A friend, a family, somebody.
So are the 1,300 people in the pool for Hillsborough covered 10,000 plus?
More than this year. That's over what we did last year.
How much more do we know?
Opportunities. There's been lots of opportunities.
Lots of opportunities.
And he paid family leave for it.
Oh, another conversation.
Yeah. Need to talk about that later.
Bless your heart, we don't talk about that.
Yes. Another conversation. Any other questions?
It is really cool to kind of see the, or get the people to do this. It's a huge, huge job, and I'm actually quite thankful that our district has a core site to go out and do this a long time ago. It's, it's very difficult to try to pull that off internally. Even if you do start 30,000 students, it's really difficult to do it. So thank you very, very much for all that you do and for all of the wonderful, really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is on your phone chain for a while. All right. Well, I, the board have been asking questions, and it's best to go straight to the source. So thank you guys for coming and giving us, I know it's extra time out of your day, and I appreciate you spending some time with us today.
Thank you for inviting us, so we appreciate. Any questions, feel free to reach out to us, and we'd be happy to answer them, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's talk math updates.
That's our next one.
Yeah, okay. This team is going to come up. They have their, um, reserved name town. As they come up, I'm just going to introduce, the team has the Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning, you can explain, Tosa of Secondary Math, Holly McNamee, and our K8, not only math, and STEM, Mandy Weddle. Also, not with us tonight, but definitely a part of the team, is also our Director of Teaching and Learning, Secondary Director, Becky Kingsmith. You may be asking, why are we discussing now in this moment math updates? And it's a two-fold. One, the team has done over two years of research since the revisions of our math standards back in October of 2021, um, to get us to the math pathways that they're about to present. That has included not only neighboring districts, national conferences. You have seen in your slide deck, um, the student empathy interviews that have been done, the educator conversations, interviews, discussions that have taken place. So they have done a great job getting us to where we're at to share the high school math pathways. The other part is that we wanted to make sure that everyone knew that foundation, and then also we're going into our K12 math curriculum adoption next year. So they're going to share a little bit about the two pilot curriculums per level that will start to take place in the 24, 25 school year. So that's why we wanted to bring not only the pathway information update to you tonight, but also to inform and let you know what, a look ahead into that curriculum adoption. So with that, team, take it away.
Um, so before I get into the details specific to Hillsborough, I first wanted to touch on OMP, Oregon Math Project. That is the state arm of the ODE that manages the, the math side of things. Um, and so one of the things that they have worked on is the updated standards as of, um, October 21st, 2021. Um, and we have some key revisions from previous standards. Previous standards, um, did not necessarily emphasize the data reasoning, and so the current standards emphasize data reasoning as its own domain. Uh, we've merged the measurement content with the geometry content at the elementary level. Um, actually, I think that's at the K12 level, um, within the context of the geometry class. And then, um, there's the revision of K12 domains to reflect the learning pathways of algebraic reasoning, numeric reasoning, geometric reasoning, measurement, and data reasoning. You can see that reasoning is included in all of those pieces. So really, we're interested in not just can our students operate procedurally, which is important, but also they can think through things and make those connections so that they know why they're operating procedurally. Um, and then identification of a core two-credit requirement in high school that aligns to the Oregon two-plus-one course design. So removing the required three years as far as must-do Algebra I, must-do geometry, must-do Algebra II, now we have a core two-years that everyone takes. Um, and then they can choose a third year that supports their post-secondary goals. And again, these are state-driven changes. These aren't necessarily something that originated in Hillsborough. We're responding to what the state has given us, um, in our process. So this is that two-plus-one model, um, where there are three, um, different little circle charts of ways that that might look like in a given district. I like that these models are, um, side-by-side instead of top-down, top, bottom-up. Uh, and then we have the three pathways below. These are just guidelines from the states, but the emphasis here is that, uh, core high school is completed in two years. There's an emphasis on choosing coursework that supports post-secondary goals after that, and creating third-year options that inspire fourth-year math. We really want our students taking four years of math, even though they're only required to take three years of math for a diploma. So how can we create a third-year experience that makes them excited about, yeah, this fourth-year math choice is going to help me after graduation? I want to make sure I do that. Um, and that's really the goal of the whole reconstruction. So we're at, um, this is our timeline, and we are in, uh, April, May. We've done a lot of work. We have worked through our pathways, which we're presenting tonight, as well as gone through the selection of curricula for piloting. Um, and as part of that work, we've constructed two teams, and we're in the process of constructing the third team. The first team was the Adoption Leadership Team. Those are the educators that helped us choose the curricula we're going to pilot. The Pathways Team was the team of educators that helped us figure out how we're going to respond to the state, uh, the state-driven changes into our high school pathways. And the piloting team is what we're constructing now, and those will be the teachers that are helping us pilot, um, our curriculum. As part of that, we've also surveyed a wide stretch of Hillsborough students and educators. Um, we've gone to every single HSE school, um, in some way, shape, or form. There is, like, we've gone to every single, we've included the voice of every single secondary math teacher. We've looked, asked leadership at all levels from elementary through high school. Um, and we even did an empathy interviews where we surveyed students. We got over 4,400 responses back from those students. And then we went in and interviewed 57 students additionally from those surveys, one-on-one, to get their individual voices. Uh, we've also gone outside of the district and around the country, looking at what the pathways look like for other states and other schools. And in all of this, what we identified were four areas of growth. The first area is that we really need to create additional on-ramps for students to access STEM-level math if they want access to STEM-level math, thinking specifically about pre-calculus and calculus. Um, and then area two, we want to make sure that the students widely accept that they are capable of all types of math, all different kinds of math, regardless of their background, regardless of previous successes, and that they have a belief that everybody has access to the math that they need for their post-secondary goals. We need to confront the very real data that is statewide, not just Hillsborough, right? That our students need more support in math. Um, and then we also found, interestingly, that in those empathy interviews, that students broadly feel that math is important, but they also can't identify why. They know that they have this belief that, like, I'm going to need this, but they also don't feel that their current classes reflect the things that they're going to need or the things that are going on in their household, or the things that they're... So that was a really interesting finding in particular. So this was our middle school pathway. Nothing has changed in terms of our middle school classes. We have seventh-grade math and eighth-grade math. If students are accelerated coming into seventh grade, they can, um, we can, which we do a global survey, or a global, uh, what's the word? Universal screener, thank you. Um, a universal screener where we look for all students, not just a specific selected portion, to see if they're ready for that eighth-grade acceleration and seventh grade, giving them access to Algebra I. If in seventh grade, a student is showing proficiency in the seventh-grade standards, they can demonstrate proficiency on the eighth-grade standards within there, and then they can move to Algebra I, accelerate that year as well. We're also talking about something based on what PPS is doing, creating some kind of STEM-connected math course. So if a student isn't identified for acceleration in seventh or eighth grade, then we can maybe look at giving them access to the STEM course to potentially be accelerated in middle school if that's what they'd like. And then we also offer a support class, connections class in seventh and eighth grade for students who might need added support to meet grade-level standards. So this is the high school core math. In ninth grade, we're moving away from, uh, putting Algebra I in ninth grade, and we want to do a semester of data reasoning and a semester of geometry in ninth. This semester of each is driven by the state. That's a, that's the state directive. We do a semester of data reasoning, a semester of geometry, and a year of Algebra I. The HSE spin on that is just choosing which year we do what. And then coming to this conclusion, the vast majority of people involved in those pathways meetings, this was a very clear suite came to, based on, um, based on the conversations that we had in the room. And then we'll do Algebra I in 10th grade, flipping those years. The reasons for this are, the main reasons for this are fourfold. A lot of districts are moving away from Algebra I in ninth grade. We're one of 13 districts that are taking a look at our algebra, geometry, Algebra II coursework and realizing this is not working for students. We need to look at a different set of pathways. A lot of districts are doing, districts are doing it with an integrated pathway. Uh, we're one of three that are keeping them compartmentalized, but swapping the years to respond to student success in ninth grade. We also believe that students, um, in this pathway setup are going to have more time to develop thinking and reasoning before taking algebra. There's a lot of data that suggests that students need more time to develop the skills that they need to be successful in algebra, and not, our freshmen are not entering into, into the ninth grade with those skills. And those are not, like, concrete skills. It's more the way they think about the world and the way they think about math. And we're hoping that through data reasoning and geometry, we can build those skills up so that they'll be more successful in algebra when they take it in tenth grade. Also going to provide additional opportunities for learning and community building in ninth grade because all students, even the accelerated students, will be able to take that course. And so all of the ninth graders are together, keeping those ninth-grade on-success statistics up, building that community within that grade, and giving us opportunity to implement some of that cell work that's so important to the district. And then we also thought that maybe clustering the algebra, so putting algebra in 10th grade could help our accelerated pathway to gain greater access to the calculus pathway that some students are going to want access to, even if they weren't previously accelerated in middle school. So that's how we developed the broader structure of 10th and 11th grade math. So in 10th grade, we have data science, which has currently been implemented... 11th grade, excuse me, 11th grade, uh, data science, which has been implemented at all of our schools. I just met with them today, that's where I was all day. It's going wonderfully, I'm super excited about the work we have there. We have our accelerated pre-calculus course. So notice that this is not fed by Algebra II necessarily. And this is what's going to give students access to calculus before they graduate from high school, if that's what they want, even if they weren't accelerated in middle school. And we're not eliminating Algebra II as a course, because there are programs that really need Algebra II, and we want to support the students who need access to Algebra II by keeping that course. We're just going to recreate our pathway so it's not a requirement for pre-calculus. That's the work, uh, the next step with our teachers when we look at these pathways and how to implement them. They're able to be some lateral movement. So if you have a student finish Algebra I in 10th grade, and then they take Algebra II in 11th grade, and they're like, I've got this, I can do the pre-calculus, they could move over to that step. So even though we're not requiring Algebra II, it's an option for students who need that, that set. Then we have some four-year options, CCP-connected others. That's really just an option for schools to be able to serve their school, their school population and their CCPs that they have and they've built out. We also want to offer a couple of different college options, college credit options. 105 is not a course that we currently have on the books. That would be something we'd have to do in the next steps. But it's a course that is at all of the public universities, and it's a way for students who aren't in a STEM field or in a business field to fulfill their business, or to fulfill their math requirements. So Math 105, offering that at our high schools would give students another opportunity to earn college credit without having to fall into one of the, uh, one of the calculus courses. So data science, we're hoping would be able to feed AP Statistics dual credit, Math 105 dual credit, or if another school has something else going on based on their CCPs, they could potentially access that. Algebra II, we're figuring those, that pathway could fill, could bring someone to AP Statistics or Math 105, or the CCP-connected other. Really pushing on that calculus pathway to be those students who are identifying as I am a STEM person who's interested in STEM, and that might be an accelerated pathway. If a student in 11th grade goes to Algebra II, decides to access that STEM pathway, they still can. It gives students lots of opportunity to move around as they're discovering who they are in high school. And then the other thing we'd like to do is offer some summer programs to promote that equitable access broadly. Uh, there's a lot of research around the country about what has worked in the post-pandemic world, and summer programs are one thing that has provided access for students to be able to access those grade-level, grade-level standards. In terms of the core high school, um, and where Oregon falls in, I wanted to emphasize that this reduction of geometry to one semester is aligned with what we're seeing on things like the SAT and ACT external to Oregon. Um, geometry does not make up a very significant proportion of those tests, and so overemphasizing it within our high schools isn't necessarily supporting student success in that case. Um, and data reasoning is emphasized just as heavily, if not more heavily, than geometry, and it's something that we haven't emphasized traditionally. So making sure we set aside that semester of data reasoning so students can be successful on those tests should they need them. Right now, they don't necessarily. Um, it just is in line with everything that we're seeing around the country and how we support students and their post-secondary goals. So, um, the other piece with this is it's not just about college. Really, those core math standards have been designed as a foundation for all students. So that data science class is leveraging technologies that are transferable to health, IT, health sciences, IT, and manufacturing. Just today, we were talking about the importance of sheets and how we should be using more of that as a way to, uh, uh, okay, a way to encourage that, um, that connection to their post-secondary goals. Uh, we're maintaining Algebra II because the ASVAB, some of the ASVAB components for military, that Algebra II class could be supportive of that. And then some of our two-year apprenticeship programs, um, use Algebra II as a piece of that. And then Math 105 would support, um, for your college-bound seniors as well. And then we also have that CCP-connected other course. So the next step, um, is exactly what we're doing. We're talking to, having to teachers, and we're communicating the change. And then we have a whole host of things that we want to do next year, um, as we think about what it's going to look like to implement this fully, um, in the 25, 26 school year. All right, for the adoption side, I'm going to hand it to Mandy.
All right, um, please excuse my voice, I'm getting over something. Um, voice is just not caught up yet. So we have, like, was mentioned before, we are also in the process of a pilot, piloting new curriculum. And so, um, I, I think you guys are familiar with the process. I know that there have been a lot of other curriculums that have come through. So where, where we have been is we had our initial selection where, um, we, Holly and I, looked at what has already been approved by ODE. We talked with other districts in the state, what are some curriculum that you're looking at? We also reached out to educators, hey, do you have friends that are doing, you know, they love the curriculum they use? And so we put all those things on the table. So we started there. Um, then we had our initial evaluation where we brought lots of different curriculum. Um, we had physical samples available. We also had digital access for teachers to be able to look at things either in person or asynchronously. And they, um, evaluated the curriculum based on the belief statements and goals that our Adoption Leadership Team created. Um, we then narrowed that evaluation based on that feedback to four curriculum at each level that we then invited publishers in to present to our team. And since then, we have narrowed even further down to two curricula at each of the levels of K5, 6, 8, and those core two high school classes that Holly would just talk to you about. So where we are is, um, our kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers, beginning in the fall of 2024, will be piloting the I-Ready curriculum and Sereka Math Squared. Um, our sixth through eighth-grade teachers will also be piloting I-Ready, um, and mid-school math. And in high school, um, they're going to be looking at Envision, which is published by Savis and Carnegie. So, um, we look forward to, uh, what comes out of those opportunities in our classrooms in the fall. So at this point, we just want to, um, open up to some questions. And before, before we do that, we also want you to know that linked on this slide, there is a talking points document that's a great summary for you all just to have, like, an overview of where we've been and all of the communication that we've done. We do, we spend a lot of time, like, we feel like it's really important to have a lot of voices in on these decisions, and so we've been doing that over the last couple of years. We're con... We're constantly looking for feedback. Most, just recently, we had an opportunity. One thing that I hear a lot in elementary classrooms is like parents saying like, what's the best way for me to support my student, you know? And math looks different than it did when I was going and I was in math class. And so recently, we had a webinar opportunity presented to us that was geared toward parents and how parents can support their students. So that's something that we're offering to our families. So we're just, we want your feedback. There is a place, the second link on this slide is a place where you can also submit questions beyond what we have time for today. And we will be using those questions to create an FAQ document. This same, or a same link, similar link has also been shared with teachers and other people so that we can start to gather and see what are those common questions so that we can have a document that hopefully is really helpful for you all to be communicators also into our community.
How is the CCP kind of involved normally have, like a process? What is?
We met with the CCP last week. We had a whole hour and a half with them.
Not just our students. With CCP, what was really helpful is we gathered a lot of questions from them as well as our student reps as well. And I think that will also help to generate the FAQ that was being referenced is we were really open of just give us all your questions that you will have, and we're going to dig through those to ensure that we're creating a high-quality product for the community as well.
I also just wanted to add, I think that it's very logical about the reasoning and switching it. I thought that was like a really, and of like why, just thinking about, or reevaluating how we do things and why we do things and like, is it the best practice or is there a better way of doing it? And I always am super appreciative of every time with our district of just us being innovative and thinking about like, well, let's reevaluate if this is the best way of doing things. Just because we've always done it this way doesn't mean it's the best thing for our kids. And as more research comes out or there's better ways of doing things. But I do like the, I remember when Common Core, you know, and I was like, I don't know how to do math anymore. And my kid is in elementary school. And they, I was like, I need a class to learn how to do this. And that was really helpful to have at school, a teacher teaching us how to support them because now it's going to be different. So if there's any additional resources as this change happens to have some change management as part of it and figure out how to bring parents along.
Yeah.
Say briefly, first of all, you're all such wonderful, brilliant people, and I really appreciate the presentation. I have a lot of questions about this. And so I told Travis that I anticipated. And I think he got back here before this meeting and said, Brooke, I should schedule some time with Brooke and she'll bring in other people if needed. And so I'm going to do that. Because it's been really interesting to follow. Some things like human sexuality, you expect to be culturally, there'll be different values. But education, I wouldn't think, I wouldn't expect there to be so much cultural differences in terms of the conversation nationally around math curriculum. But following what's happening in California over the past several years and, you know, a lot of people feel like something's taken away or from them when these changes are made. By its heart, I find a lot of policy areas, I have to do a lot of digging to get down to whether is it just that on the same set of facts, we have different values and that's okay? Or is it that we're not offering the same set of facts and we're not, so we have to explain the facts more? Sometimes I have to really dig into it to figure out which is the case. And so I want to do a little more digging on this. And so I'm looking forward to asking the questions. I understand all the perspectives, but I want to understand them even better because it's really interesting to me. Sounds like you've done a lot of research over several years. And so I'm really looking forward to accessing that through book and getting to know more about that. Oh yeah, because we all want students to have, I mean, I, I loved just learning math, even though I didn't teach during mathematics. I did both high school and college. I really found it fascinating. And so we want our students to have access to math that will engage them and that will prepare them for what they're going to do, but also just to learn the beauty of mathematics. And I know that we all want that. And I think it's great that we're reevaluating, looking at this and being a part of that conversation here in Hillsborough School District. And I know we have laws standards for the state. But I think it's really great that we're doing, we're going even far above and beyond. And so thank you, and just wanted to signal that I'm not going to ask any questions right now. We'll be very interested to learn more about your work over the next few months.
There are some resources at the end that we didn't, we specifically didn't put in there. And it's not all of them, but it was just a sampling of it. So you're all welcome to access any of those. It will support, and I'm happy, Mandy and I are happy to provide anything else as needed.
And Patrick, I would say I love that you're going to set up a meeting. I would definitely bring those questions written because I think in this room, we are all sense makers for our community. And so as you're either hearing feedback from the community or from your own research, I think some of those questions can end up then also being on our FAQ because that eventually we want to anchor to that for our community as a landing page of, you may have a question about this, here's the research of the answer. You have a question about this, here's the research of the answer. So I am excited about the meeting, but I also think bringing those written will be helpful for us so we can also put those on the FAQ.
Just so you guys know that Brooke and her team are usually the highlight of our board meeting. We brag when we're out in the community and we're on the school boards about how we have the consistent frequent presentation about new curriculum. Most of it is generated and requested by.
Thank you.
I was recalling too, when I was, had that class, it was our dual-language teacher that provided that information. And I'm looking at the final list with, I just assume everything's available in Spanish as well?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that was one of the things, like, but I know with social studies, there weren't as, a plethora of Spanish materials. And so it kind of narrowed to what we could select. Math, on the other hand, is a major core subject area. There are so many more publishing companies that have made sure that they have come in Spanish. And so that was, we didn't even consider anything that wouldn't have fulfilled what we're looking for in Spanish materials, so please have it.
And is there a plan to maybe present to like the PAC leadership about this change? Because it's pretty significant about this to be in front of them and say like, I think sometimes we tend to do like survey things, but it's more in person and like where we get more questions from parents. Travis, you want to add something?
I was just going to thank the group, Gina, Holly, Mandy, Brooke, Becky who's not here. We want to land the board at a spot where you feel really confident about voting for the adoption of the math curriculum that we get to sometime next year, hopefully. And the process that you all are leading is really thorough in elevating student voice, but also elevating teacher voice. That slide that has all the percentages of like 100% of teachers have access to this process is really impressive. And it'll be transparent, inclusive of a lot of different voices and perspectives, and it'll land us in a good spot as far as adopting the next math curriculum. So thank you so much for all the hours of work that you put into it and the thoughtfulness.
You mentioned accelerated path for middle school, where an eighth grader could end up in algebra. And it was Stone Age, but that was me. And I don't know how I would have felt about going to something else and then going back to algebra in my sophomore year. So can you sort of, so if you were in eighth grade algebra, then you do data reasoning, geometry, and then you go back to algebra? And, because it was Algebra I again?
So the student would have an access point to the third year. So they, because they are, they are grade level accelerated. So they would take Algebra I in eighth grade. And then they would take Geometry, Data Reasoning in ninth grade. And then in 10th grade, they would choose Data Science, Algebra II, or Pre-Calculus.
Okay.
If they, for some reason, that eighth grade Algebra I experience didn't go great, they could choose to retake Algebra I if that was what was in their best interest. And it would remove some of that stigma because it's separated by a year, it's not quite so obvious. And really, but that pathway of Algebra I, Geometry, Data Reasoning plus, that's the same as what our accelerated students are doing right now. So there's really no change for them.
So the student didn't go on eighth grade algebra, they wouldn't be doing it again in their sophomore year? Okay.
Unless they want to.
Unless they want to, right. Okay, well, and then, okay, so back to if they want to. You mentioned sort of, students can go the path of calculus if they want to, but then also helping students understand that the path of calculus may be something they should consider, even if they hadn't considered it. How do we sort of balance that? Well, sure, take calc if you want, and also encouraging students to high-paying, high-STEM careers by doing the hard thing and go ahead and take calc?
I think that's a two-fold answer. I think one of the cornerstones they talk about in the ODE is belonging. And that's definitely something as a system we need to encourage. And that's them making all students believe that they are capable of any level of math that they want to access. So that's part of it, that's the hard work. The connected work, the concrete work, the stuff that we can actually make sure that we're connecting is just like encouraging students to connect those fourth year and third year to what they want to do after high school. How, like going into our career and college pathways, I have a hope to be able to connect every career in college pathway to some level of math pathway so that they see, oh, I want to be a pilot, these are the math things I should do. I want to be a nurse, these are the math things I should do. So it stops being about which math class is notable, right? Which math class I think I should do and which math class will actually support my progression to my post-secondary goals.
I would also add, when we look at the number of teacher voices, there's also been school counselors that have been on the committee. There's also career and technical education teachers that are on the committee and administrators because as we build kind of the sense-making map for students, it's not only going to be their math teacher that they see every day or every other day, but it's also the counselor that they may see to talk about their CCP and their courses for next year if they're doing course selection. It could be their CTE teacher is making the connection of these skills that you are currently doing in your CTE class and how that connects to math, or it's thought of one day, how we grow that CCP-connected math opportunity. So I just want to note and highlight the voices that you brought in that are outside of maybe what we think of as educators in math.
I think there's national data that we're not preparing enough students for STEM careers. Not, so it's not just us. It's, so when you say during the presentation, things like not working for our students, what does that mean to you? That the current system isn't working for our students? Is it not creating enough students interested in STEM or is it something else?
I think ninth grade on track is a data point that we use in the district heavily as whether or not we want our students, like whether they're finding success freshman year, because if they find success freshman year, they're more likely to graduate on time, they're more likely to progress through our system, they're more likely to take a fourth year math class. So that's really my thought. I didn't take calculus until I was in college. And so I don't think it's necessary for students to take calculus. I just want to provide that opportunity if that's fair. But, but there's a number of methods we could use to measure that. I think STEM, right, access to STEM, that is one data point that we could consider and something that we could track. But in terms of our core, I think the biggest thing that our counselors looked at, that the people outside of math in particular were really concerned with is how do we support those ninth grade students so that they have a really successful ninth grade year and feel good about and ready for moving on to the rest of high school?
Yeah, you could be a chemical engineer and take calc in freshman year of college, yeah.
That wasn't going to have to be a question.
I mean, right.
Not the weighty, meaty questions, but just like. In the state standards, I'm used to, you know, the lower grades, the grade level standard in different areas. How is high school math, how are the state standards expressed? Are they expressed per course or per function area? And how is it integrated in different courses?
Back to high school, I'm sorry. Was that, there's an algebra section, a geometry section, and a data reasoning section.
Per course essentially. Other standards for higher math in the state level? Those are kind of districts that develop entirely on their own. Okay. And then I was, I haven't thought about my own experience a lot, but thinking back, I remember nearly 20 years ago when I was in high school, there being a separate trigonometry course. Is that, that those concepts have been entirely substituted to pre-calculus now? Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
If there were more questions on math, it would be up to the board to bring our team back sometime like in mid-progress of our adoption. I mean, I love, I love the level of interest on talking about math, and it's super important. So this doesn't have to be the end of the conversation. We don't have to do it all via email and FAQ. We can talk about that if you all have more questions when we plan the next calendar board meeting.
I just, I just hope that we take into account, I remember people, community members coming in and saying that they were concerned about one math class, another math class, and how this is going, that this is the kind of, honestly, I think if our community didn't care the enthusiasm that you have right now, they might think differently. And their students might feel differently. So, thank you, and hope you take the road show.
Right, I'm all for whatever.
Good show.
Yeah. Science frankly, physics first or whatever. That gets Hillsborough students into those high-paying technical fields. Thank you guys for being here.
You're happy, thank you so much.
Feel better, thank you.
Next-gen item is calendar, and Conna is out six, so.
Something for Conna Williams tonight, sorry.
Yes, that's about.
I'm not working on this right now. Simple objective to share the proposed process so y'all have confidence in the next calendar proposal that comes forward next fall for approval. Starting this spring, we'll initiate a school calendar committee. And so this would be a committee commissioned by the board. So we want you to consent to this committee tonight. The committee will include a board member. We've asked Monique if she would participate. Monique had really good questions about the calendar and our different, actually we've classified them. Last time we proposed the calendar, so we recruited her for this committee. Any other board member could also sign up for the committee, but usually we have one board member represent on a committee. We would also include licensed staff, classified staff, administrator, union partners, family members, and a student representative. The committee will be meeting six to seven times beginning this spring, continuing into the late summer and fall in 2024. The goal of the committee will be to understand the rationale for developing calendars, why it is that we make choices that we do at school systems, and collectively provide input for the process to create a two-year calendar proposal moving forward. So, the goal would be that that committee itself would build confidence in why it is that we're bringing forward that. We'll have communication strategies to get information out to the community. Connor is team captain on facilitating this committee and authorizing this message.
I could answer the question. Question?
Thank you to Monique for helping and.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up on this committee, Monique. Other questions? We don't have to take board action to create a new committee or anything.
Nope, we just add it to a list. Usually Rose comes with the committees in the August retreat and will ask board members to sign up for the standing committees that we have and we'll now have a calendar committee.
So, I guess that's a potential. So, we expect this to be an ongoing committee, not just a thing we do for the next calendar adoption?
I think it would be activated when we need it, when we're coming up on an adoption and we have backward map from the date that you want to adopt a calendar. This would be theoretically, this would be a two-year proposal and so we'd activate the committee again eighteen months later. I saw it, I don't know if you see it or not, if you remember, I really appreciate this process that we, the leadership before was something that they thought would be possible to do just as an administrative matter and then it turned out there was more community partner. Collaborative process and I think that was very responsive.
Yeah, appreciate the way the administrative team adapted to the changing environment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? At this point, we have an unusual order of things. I will, the work session is now adjourned. For students, we're going to do executive session after instead of before, because I do have things I need to do, that's right. All right. All right, discussion time, sorry, forgot, we do that first. Students, would you like to go, who would like to go first?
I don't really have anything to add tonight, but I can't believe we're down to like second to last, third to last meeting.
Will you share anything about last night?
Oh, that was a lot of fun. We met a lot of very interested candidates.
Oh, did your, uh, your conversation last night, yeah? How, how?
It was a virtual meeting with all three student reps and about how many students?
About ten, eight, fifteen?
I think it's going to be tough making a decision though, because that's a lot of really good questions.
Last year too.
The year gets tougher.
I don't think it's ever been easier, so that's good.
Okay, is it Saturday night?
Yeah, I was just going to say, great presentations from math team, ESS, and the board from North Plains.
The council.
I got to shake the mayor's hand.
You're taking a picture of where you're going to.
Met the mayor, but I suppose around the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
The council president was here too.
I was going to say that proud to be HD, proud to be HD is really fun. I got a thing at the farmer's market with, like I think, thank the choir. And I was, any of you guys are free this Thursday at seven, we have our last choir concert. And we'll be showcasing my senior project, which is arranging and composing three, possibly four different songs from different groups in the chamber, in the choir. So, if you guys are, if you guys are free this Thursday, please show up, please support. And yeah, as what Aliano was saying, it was really fun to meet, uh, greet, meet and greet with the future candidates who are going to take our position.
Thank you, I wouldn't put it that way. Take your position.
We'll be passing our torch too. But you guys are good hands, but you guys are going to have a tough decision.
Yeah. I, I guess since we're starting a discussion, Rose, what are the two dates we're thinking of?
Next Monday and next Tuesday.
So, I think you signed up for Tuesday, is that right? Do you remember?
I think it was Mon, was it Tuesday or Monday?
Tuesday. So, we're looking for someone for Monday.
Yeah, would somebody be available to do some student interviews? Monday, the, so I think I'm doing both, but I wouldn't want to do it by myself.
Well, no, I think it was Monday.
You're signing up for Monday?
Yeah.
Which of the days?
Next Monday.
You know, which, which one do you need, Monday or Tuesday?
Figuring that out. Oh, you're starting on Tuesday, so you know.
You got even to Monday, sorry, I need somebody for Tuesday.
All right, so we need somebody for Tuesday if that's possible. Where, where is Tuesday taking place?
Tuesday is at Liberty.
At what time?
Eleven to two.
Oh, the auditorium lunches there, right? Isn't that the same time as the auditorium lunch?
Oh, you're missing it.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
I can do Tuesday though, if you need it.
You're available Tuesday?
Yes.
Two of you that can do Tuesday, then I can do auditorium, two of you can do Tuesday?
You want to be involved?
If, if it works out, if it doesn't work out. Thursday? Have you already contacted the students about, which, which one is, is that Liberty, is that what you said? And that's eight?
Eight of them. Don't go back.
So, we had, we have eight at Glencoe?
Yeah, and they went back.
Okay, all right. Be in a vet for Monday and then we'll figure out something that's going to be next week, all right.
And if it's others that do that, just let me know for that might be. Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, so either two of you go on Tuesday to Liberty and I'll go to auditorium or we do Liberty on Thursday.
I remember last year, I noticed about the auditorium lunch, but I don't remember hearing anything about this year, is there something you're doing?
I'm excited to speak, but anybody's can go, yeah.
Any, yeah, any board member can go, but only the chair.
Yeah, I forgot, I didn't see it on our board update this year, so.
Thursday's about the current lunch.
Thursday's retirement celebration at South Meadows, four thirty.
Yeah, I probably just missed the auditorium, so I'll see about that next time.
Travis, discussion time?
Yeah, it's awesome shout-outs that I have for next board meeting, but I did want to appreciate the board for interfacing with North Plains and their commitment. The board goal this year to institute holidays, the opportunity to build a relationship there, so thank you for that. I did also want to highlight that I sent y'all a link with Salem Kaiser, Ben Lapine, Medford Town and PPS superintendents beginning to inform state leaders about the kind of dire situation that's going on in their school districts regarding budget. And I will keep that information flowing to you. I'm involved in meetings that are going on weekly with the larger school districts discussing where we all are at. Just want to tell you, we're all at in different places. Those school districts are facing some shortfall that we aren't, mainly because of the stewardship of our resources by the board and Michelle Morrison. And we don't have to own all that debt, but I am in cahoots with the leaders around the state to figure out how, what do we have in common when it comes to asking for sufficient funding for what K-12 education is being asked to do in Oregon. And so, I hope that you feel informed by that, but there's no need to respond. That is all, thank you.
It's a good video. I don't know if you had a chance to watch the video, but it was good video. And, and so many national stories even of just teacher, it's, we're in this weird position where for a year, at the, at least the seven years I've been on the board, we've been talking about a shortage of teachers, not being able to hire enough teachers. And now we're talking about a thousand of teachers. It's befuddling, yeah. I see Monique, Monique, anything you want to add tonight?
No, I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Sheehan, anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, nothing from me, thank you.
Thanks. Start with Erica, I guess.
I just wanted to say, we went to the API celebration at Tamarack, which was really nice. And I actually missed that opening of that school, so it was my first time going to Tamarack, so that was pretty cool. And we saw Hadley do his presentation and dance, which was really awesome. And some beautiful, beautiful dances. And I loved, the gym has a stage there, like that was awesome. Just made me feel really proud, or bomb dollars, I was like, yes, this is awesome. And I look forward to it growing and to expand year after year. So, thanks for everybody that put that on, that was awesome.
So, that's kind of the gym smell.
Yeah.
Anything to share tonight?
Uh, yes, thanks. Briefly, I wanted to mention that last summer, the board got an update from our leadership team about the cell phone policies in schools. Other standardized policies and reducing use and doing class time. And I remember at that time thinking that, oh, that was really interesting and I understood the rationale. And same time, a part of me has, always has a bias toward trusting the judgments. Again, I don't help develop their judgments, and so I'm always a little bit unsure about one side fits all policies. But I wanted to say that it seems like every couple of months as I'm reading the education research alerts in the news, I see something new about, you know, data-driven studies being released about the negative effects of cell phone use among secondary students in schools and the benefits to reducing that usage in schools. And just recently, when I was reading out in Norway, that seemed pretty rigorous comparing before and after, complete cell phone bans in schools in that country and the academic improvement, bullying and psychological health improvement, so it just was very convincing. So, I'm just glad that we, you know, stand there, hold on that, and I appreciate, I'll look forward to learning more about how that's gone. You know, if the past year is even further steps are needed or if it's going really well. But just wanted to say thank you, I'm reading all this and thank you that that's all in place here.
Good night.
Um, just a little bit of update from the Oregon School Board Association. They are very busy on the number of fronts and have been presented with a petition to certify their staff, which desires to be. So, we are going through that process as we see. They have identified an organization that is supposed to sponsor them and so we are contemplating that as we speak as well. I know initially I was to say, I think that if they want to do it, that's great. And now I think they're organizing with and how they lumpen together is, so I'm sure they'll be more than important on this. It is what it is. Just important for you to know that, at the same time, the Oregon School Board Association is trying to repair its reputation. It's been through quite a bit lately. I feel like I got dumped into a firestorm, I'm going to say it. And I try to bring as much positivity as I can to their meetings right now, which are. Right now, but we're working on it. I see some hope, some hope it continues to go positive. They have one staff member, their legislative policy director, actually will be retiring at the end of the summer. She is pretty much the sole body of that organization and it has been extremely hard to, to see them, quite frankly, in here over everything that has happened this past year. That situation itself has not been resolved still, so we're still working on that as well. So, it's, it's very interesting. It makes me appreciate this organization and this district and what we do. But I'll hold out a little bit of hope that things continue to go forward and, and be positive. And Mia was doing, their interim president is doing a wonderful job, quite frankly, in the midst of a major storm. So, I will keep you posted as we go forward. We have another special meeting on Thursday from eight to ten AM. I'm not sure how I'm going to do that, but I'm going to figure that one out. And then on Saturday, we have another meeting and I'm, I'm going to be in the Goma Four race. So, I guess I'm going to be sitting under the tent with my team with one ear bud in my ears, trying to do that at the same time and hoping that I'm not on the water in the morning. So, we'll get it, I'll keep you posted, keep you squared away. But yeah, it's, it's been interesting. I think, Erica, I'll just say to you, if, if you know of the individuals who are involved, please reach out to them and provide them with as much support as you can. But anyway, that's it, thank you.
Thank you for doing that extra work. I think you and some of the other new people are the right people for the job, so.
It does, it does, it does, I can't deny it, I, I tried to be quiet. I kind of let the people who have been there longer than me to deal with this situation and then I finally had to step in and say, I'm. I mean, you're going to get this together and we're going to move forward or we're not. So, I'm, I'm glad I finally opened up my mouth instead of being, because that, this person has changed.
Anything to add tonight?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Okay, I had student interviews, we're good on that one. There's been a couple of emails to the board recently that staff have replied to, so just a heads up. Normally, you'll see a reply from me if it goes to the entire board, but when sometimes staff takes care of it, it's not necessary. So, if there's a couple that look like they haven't been replied to, staff has already handled those, just a heads up. And yeah, there's the, Erica got to the bottom of the Salem Kaiser advocacy letter, which really isn't that. So, if you see some of that traffic in your inbox, apparently, it, the messaging in the letter was great, I thought. But I also seem weird to be getting it from an organization never heard of and a person never heard of, so. End of the bottom of that. I think what it does, it reminds us of how important. Especially as we go through bargaining, especially as nationwide, teacher layoffs, staff layoffs, we're in the middle of bargaining ourselves. I hope we don't have to do that, I think we're in a good spot, so. So, there, so those are the things I wanted to cover. And I guess, second email Patrick said, yeah, the, the data, not just about cell phone use, is overwhelmingly clear. It's like social media, the detriment of access to social media to kids, didn't have an Instagram account when you're twelve yet, it's easy for eight. And even when. You may see me advocating for going further because out in the way, when a student is getting notifications and it's in their pocket and they don't pick it up, they're still being interrupted by notifications. A lot of school districts reporting, it's locking them up for the whole day and when they don't even have them at lunch, they just talk to each other.
What?
I hold four bands, we can second their motion.
Yeah, and I believe that, and, and parent resistance, student resistance, all of these things are things we can, it's not jump to rash conclusions, but a lot of the data is indicating, and studies of asking students, okay, so how much do I have to pay you to not be on social media for two weeks? And there's a number, they all come up with a number. And then they say, okay, if I, how much do I have to pay you for everyone in the whole school to be off social media for two weeks? And the kids say, no, I would pay you for them. So, even students understand that that, and we, we wonder, wonder, but the mental health needs of our students are beyond what we ever predicted and beyond art. And maybe it's because of social media, right? It, it could be. The FAA didn't exist till, we didn't think we needed to regulate airplanes until fifty-five or whatever. So, things are moving very fast. All right.
I can take a second, my band.
Not quite there yet. You probably will see me advocate for, for the restrictions of cell phones in our classrooms. All right, now the work session is officially adjourned and we will reconvene in the next session. We changing links, right? All right, now it's adjourned as our.